Dune and Injolingi people, the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today, and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people here today. Please note this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd like to welcome Pastor Laurie Isahoe from the Lutheran Church today to do the prayer for us.
Before the prayer, I'd like to read a few Bible verses from Gospel John, meant to be for today. It's a very old hedge, it's from chapter fifteen, verses eighteen and up to twenty. If the world hates you, keep in mind that it hates me first. If it belongs to the world, it will love you as its own. As it is, you do not belong to the world, but I have chosen you out of the world. That is why the world hates you. Remember what I told you. A servant is no longer, is no much greater than his master. If they persecuted me, they will persecuted you also. If they obey my teaching, they will obey yours also. So let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, be with us and help us to do the work you want us to do, especially today. Be with the church council and help them to make a right decision for the best interest for the all people in this town. I pray this in the name of Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Isahoe. Item three, apologies or leaves of absence. I'd like to apologise for Deputy Mayor councillor Coghlan today, she's not able to join us.
Second to Tully.
Oh, sorry.
Second to Tully.
Thank you, second councillor Tully. Public participation, I've scanned the crowd and we don't seem to have any public participation today, but thank you for coming along to observe our meeting. Confirmation of previous minutes, item five point one, would anyone like to move that motion?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Thank you councillor Crowther, do I have a second there?
Second councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully. Actions from the previous council meeting, item six point one. Would anyone like to move that?
Ballard.
Moved by councillor Ballard, seconded by?
Doyle.
Councillor Doyle, thank you. Do we have any declarations of conflict of interest?
Yeah, I do, with the Outback at Isa project I'm doing at the Outback at Isa, so I have a conflict of interest there.
Okay, so councillor Dawes declaring a conflict for item sixteen point three. And were you planning to leave the room for that one?
Yes, I will.
Yep, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so it's time for the merril minute. I'd like to start the merril minute by acknowledging the passing of Fiona Coghlan, a much loved member of the community. The councillors and CEO attended the service at the Good Shepherd School last week and everyone commented on what a touching service and tribute it was and the incredible strength shown by both councillor Coghlan's being able to deliver their eulogies. I'd like to extend my sympathy on behalf of Mount Isa City Council to councillor Coghlan and family at this time. June has been a very busy month for Mount Isa City Council with events and the economic development reports starting to reach completion, with advocacy around these and of course the budget. It was a terrific opportunity to meet federal connections during the Rock delegation and we have been able to meet with them after to advocate for the needs of Mount Isa in relation to the economic transition and how our potential projects fit in with the national agendas of Australian made and net zero. We are continuing to advocate for North West Water in conjunction with Clonkari Shire Council. There has been an invitation extended to Minister Butcher to host a roundtable here in Mount Isa, as he offered. However, we are waiting for this to come to fruition. The discussion needs to be had as to whose responsibility it is to pay for drought mitigation. Does any other LGA have to bear the impost of paying for rights to pump from an alternate water source if they run out of water? As we have not pumped from Lake Julius since 2012 at $800,000 a year, this equates to $9.6 million. This money could have been used to replace our ageing sewer network and reduce the cost of water for residents. We will continue to lobby in conjunction for North West Water with the state member. The budget process also reminds us we only receive 50% of the water dividend returned to council and this amount is never confirmed during the budgeting process. Currently, this sits at a $3.1 million loss against operational performance, as noted in today's financials. It makes it an impossible task to create an accurate budget where there is $6 million worth of uncertainty involved. Mayor Campbell and I implore the state government to provide certainty around water pricing in order to develop the heart of the North West Minerals Province. I would like to start by congratulating Mount Isa Show on holding a successful event on the weekend. Several councillors were able to get along to the show where Mount Isa City Council had a stall handing out merchandise, educating about recycling and showcasing the animals we have up for adoption. The councillors were all taken through that animal management facility this month and one of our priorities is to educate the community on registering and de-sexing pets. For various reasons, animals end up in our care and for the best results in terms of cost and animal welfare, it is to have these animals returned as quickly as possible to their families. To help us with this, we need to ensure that animals are microchipped and registered. Sometimes there are reasons as to why people have to surrender their pets. If you are thinking of getting a new furry friend, please consider rehoming a pet as there are several dogs and cats in the facility that would love to find a forever home. This month, the councillors took the opportunity to tour council facilities to gain a better understanding of the organisation in context and to see how our people are enacting our values of integrity, service and accountability. Thanks to the CEO for driving the bus and the staff at the works yard, the AMF, the WMF, that's the Waste Management Facility, and the water sewage plant for showing us around and we look forward to more interactions with them and the other teams in the future. Without staff, our council could not deliver the services we take for granted and we need to hear from them as to how we can make improvements. The special meeting to pass the 2025-2026 budget is today at 12pm. There's been much work done around the budget and I'd like to thank staff for their contributions. I won't speak to that now and I'll save that for next meeting, so if anyone's got time, it'll be livestreamed at that time. Okay, item nine, consideration of correspondence, there's nil for today. Item ten, notices and motion, nil. And nil executive services reports. We'll move on to item number twelve, corporate services reports. Do I have a mover for item twelve point one, corporate services overview report, April 2024 and May 2024?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the April 2024 and May 2024 corporate services overview report as presented.
Do, thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second there for that? Thank you councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak to that councillor Ballard?
Sure, we see in that overview that at the same time that we're seeing a significant increase in incoming correspondence in the form of phone calls and emails, we're also seeing a reduction in the response time to those phone calls. So I think that that's probably a good indicator that those new starters in the customer service team are starting to find their feet and really get around their roles.
Thank you councillor Ballard, did you have any comments councillor Coghlan?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'd better go to the vote on that one. All in favour? Yes, that is moved, passed. Item twelve point two, the finance overview report, May 2024.
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the May 2024 finance overview report as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second there?
I'll second it.
Councillor Crowther, thank you, would you like to speak to that councillor Ballard?
Yep, so this week we received advice from Treasury that the payment of our water dividend from the Mount Isa Water Board was disappointingly about a million dollars less than had been budgeted. So that's going to have a negative impact on council's cash position as a result. I'll speak to that a little further in the special meeting, but in another area, it's pleasing to see that council's efforts to recover long outstanding rates has led to the payment of nearly $400,000 in amounts owing. While it's been largely through the notice of intention to sell properties, I'd like to take the opportunity to encourage anyone who's having difficulty paying their rates to reach out and be proactive with council and try and get on a payment plan because the last thing we really want to do is be letting things get to that point.
Thank you councillor Ballard, any further comments? All in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Item twelve point three, 2024-2025 procurement policy and financial delegations register, do I have a mover?
I'd like to move that council adopts the 2024-25 procurement policy version thirteen with the financial delegations register version six as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second there for that motion?
Second to councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully.
Mayor McCrae, can I speak about?
You may speak, I'll just go to councillor Ballard first and then I'll pop over to you if that's okay?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that this procurement policy is perhaps a first step in a long process that is going to reflect this council's shared intention to keep as much money spent from the council local as possible. I think the streamlining and the variations in the amount of variance and priority given to local suppliers reflects that and it's a good first step.
Okay, thank you councillor Ballard.
Yeah, I just, I've been through this and I've spoke to, I've communicated with councillors my concerns that, I guess what I'd like to do, I feel really a bit frustrated at the moment because I'm not sure how I'm contributing to the council because we seem to be very removed from the operations, which I understand why. But just within this procurement policy, I'd like to see, is there a way that we can be involved earlier in the process rather than at the end? Simply, you know, if we're going to buy an asset for $200,000 which is direct to Ken, it's an asset and as such, we're sort of there at the tail end when things get presented. And I was just wondering if there was a way within that policy that we could be involved earlier because I see a great resource at this table and even the deputy mayor is sometimes a resource. But I think that would be better to use our resource that we have early in that process rather than at the end of it when all the decisions have been made. I hope that makes sense, but I think everyone knows my opinion over the communication we've had.
Would you like to respond to that CEO?
Thank you madam mayor, yeah, look, basically, this is only one of a number of policies that guide the principles of spending public funds. So council's pretty much involved, obviously, in the budgetary process, but the policy's really a governance guideline around making sure that we can run the business accurately. So we've got a $110 million business, you know, there's a whole range of expenditure that's run of the mill, like paying electricity bills, paying water bills, making sure we spend money. Like, for instance, if the series treatment plant breaks down or has something that needs to be addressed, well, it needs to be addressed in a timely manner and council's saying, okay, well, this is the level of delegations that we're prepared to give to managers and then directors and then the CEO. But at the end of the day, officers still have to use judgment. So, you know, you're asking us to make decisions and we're well aware of the fact that we're expending public money. So anything that we think that the council can add value to in the decision-making process, we'll definitely bring that back to council and that'll be done through workshops or reports. And, you know, it doesn't give us, you know, for instance, if I want to buy something like that's out of normal business practices, I would expect myself and the officers to bring stuff to council. It's making sure that we can run the council but also involve the council.
Through the mayor, yeah, Tim, in a situation like that, do people sign off on it? Or just does one of the managers have the capability of just doing that on his own?
Well, maybe, maybe an example would be if something breaks at the series treatment plant, for instance, the manager of water series got delegated authority up to $50,000 so they can get something done and repaired quickly. But it gets escalated depending on the value of what needs to be done. So it'll then go to the director for dealing with it, it's a smaller matter and then it'll come to me. So there's like a series of, you know, processes before it gets to my level. So, and then I've got to use, if it's something that's within the normal council, depending, well, yeah.
Yeah, so three people more or less sign off on that?
Well, it might, yeah, generally, something like that, that's right.
So that gives rid of, I just like the idea of one person signing off on it at 50 grand, so.
You've got to go through a PO and you've got to, there's a whole process.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess an example would be like at the moment with the delegation, some of the properties are that cheap at the moment. You could probably go out and purchase a property under your delegation, but in the past, they've always come back to council for us to make those decisions. So like if it's not in their budget and it's not something we've planned to buy, they wouldn't be expending that without coming to council to get approval, even though it is within their delegation. That's just, like I said, for emergencies and so council can keep functioning in an emergency. Because if something breaks, we can't wait for the next council ordinary meeting to pass it.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I don't want to interfere with any operations, like, but I just see assets and I see at the moment, you know, we're looking at selling assets that are obsolete or past their use by date and so forth. And we're, you know, a $110 million budget. So if assets are being purchased, that affects the budget and it'll continue to affect that budget going forward. So I was just more concerned with the assets rather than anything to do. If something breaks, you've got to keep the lights on, Tim, you know, like Peter's cup of tea's got to be hot in the morning sort of thing, you know?
Exactly right councillor Coghlan. And I think probably some of your frustration comes from, understandably, you weren't here last week when we discussed it in the meeting, but we did talk about disposal of assets and how we're going to go about doing that when we discussed the policy last week as well.
Okay, so all in favour? Thank you, that is carried. We'll go on to item twelve point four, debt policy, 2024-2025, do I have a mover?
I'd like to move that council adopts the 2024-25 debt policy as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second for the motion?
Councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully, would you like to speak on that councillor Ballard?
Sure, the amendments to this document and the documents in the next two agenda items don't extend much beyond changes to the responsible personnel, the names listed and the dates of those documents.
Thank you, any further commentary? All in favour? Item twelve point five, 2024-25 investment policy.
I move that council adopts the 2024-25 investment policy as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second there?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Councillor Coghlan to seconds.
Again, this is just an update to the document.
Thank you, all in favour? Perfect. Item twelve point six, competitive neutrality complaint management policy.
I'd like to move that council adopts the competitive neutrality complaint management policy version three as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second there?
Crowther.
Thanks councillor Crowther, any words?
Again, it's just an update to this document.
Thank you, all in favour? And that is carried. That takes us to item thirteen, community services reports. Item thirteen point one, economic development overview report, May 2024. Do I have a mover?
Yeah, I'll move it councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully, do I have a second for that one?
Crowther.
Thank you councillor Crowther, and I understand we have?
Yes, can I, can I just apologise on behalf of the council and the community for the dress standard of our presenter today, it's a bit offensive, but there's no.
Okay, we have the manager of community services here to discuss the economic development report today.
And proudly dressed in blue. Yes, thank you for the opportunity, I'll just do an overview because I know in the merril minute it was touched off on the works, as the transformation works is going on with Mount Isa. I'll just provide a quick overview, the advisory committees that we've had in place over in the past has been motorsports advisory committee, the mine workers memorial committee, Lake Mundara and Hundred Years Celebration Committee. The Hundred Years Celebration Committee did a fantastic job and completed all tasks and allowed for the delivery. The motorsports is well underway again, we've got the feasibility study, as noted, completed and now the motorsports enthusiasts of town are sort of pulling together, planning the events moving forward to show that the demand's there for a facility. And Mount Isa City Council is now looking at the regulatory works required for any construction works to go ahead. The mine workers memorial committee, they've completed their works by way of the detailed design works coming forward to council, which have already been approved and they will now, will have a meeting closer to rodeo time with the next one, whereby we'll be looking at funding options and next steps and what they look like. The Lake Mundara Advisory Committee, they are currently waiting on the five-year strategy from the Water Board to come out to see what drops out of that and we've also part of the tourism study work that's going on as a part of those six pillars. We'll give some further direction regarding next steps also. Economic development, our officer's been actively engaged with Commerce North West and that includes the mining expo that was recently delivered. We made reference to Regional Economic Futures Fund, the Gliderport and Renewable Energy Hub precinct, unsuccessful with that, but yet Outback at Isa was successful in receiving 150k in preliminary work funding as well as $65,000 in gallery works to commence. And they also have an Indigenous arts or fashion arts display coming up in September four where they've received funding for as well from Glencore, very appreciative. On that also, the economic diversification strategy is ongoing. We keep on monitoring our works against those and our officer does a fantastic job. We've also, council had the opportunity to meet our regional jobs coordinator manager at the last, I think it was a workshop or the briefing session, sorry. We had an EOI go out to community groups to form part of that committee. We had, I believe it was 35 received, which is a fantastic result. They will form a part of a committee across eight industry sectors. The letters of advice are going out this week with notification of success and the first meeting will be held, I believe it is in late August or mid-August after the rodeo. Oh, sorry, sorry, later this month in July, we'll have our first meeting where a chair will be appointed and works will be ongoing. All other works is based around the six pillars.
Okay, thank you very much, that was a very thorough report. Did anyone have any questions in relation to the report?
Not really a question, but just more wanted to touch base more on that motorsports committee. We chaired that first meeting since being elected. Got some good positive feedback from the members that they sort of felt that we're sort of actually working towards a goal with them, you know, so. Which is good, we've got another meeting coming up next month, which, from setting some tasks with the guys or in the team in the, on the committee there and they're going to be starting to bring in, and they've already started bringing some information back which will then collate and then again work through to a better strategy for that motorsports committee. And then, yeah, that was pretty, like I said, that was pretty good. And then just sort of, just eagerly waiting, have we got an actual date to when all those final reports for the six pillars are going to get through now, there's the sort of plan for the end of this month, wasn't it?
Basically at finalisation and we're just getting the final, final wrap-up report.
Yep, and will that include the tourism one or is that going to be still outstanding?
Brian, when's the tourism one finished?
They're in the process now finalising a draft report and that should be out within the week. They're doing their best to make the timeframes given as they started a month later, as they were funded through state government.
Yep, perfect.
Can I speak on that too?
Okay, yes.
Yep, I just wanted to say that, sorry, I just wanted to say that I'd spoken to sports and recreation, Mount Isa and Townsville about the motorsport stuff and I'd also spoken to one of the people on the committee as well. And a big concern that the community had was that it was just for enthusiasts, but it's not like they're actually doing, they're going through everything that they need to go with the feasibility studies through sports and recreation, driver NQ, so they're actually going through the right processes and everything to make sure it's, you know, it's going to be suit the community and the town. So that was pretty impressive for me to witness, so yeah.
Yes, so just stemming on to that, it's sort of driver training, safety, off-road drive, road safety as well. So it's rather than just sports, it's going to be towards, and then working towards safety features as well. Exactly.
Yeah, there's no doubt when it happens, it'll be a great facility for the community.
Through the chair, just back to Trav, have they sort of talked to any of the locals who, you know, may sort of sponsor equipment or anything like that towards helping? Like in Winton, they'd done it, it was all done voluntary and I'm not saying here voluntary, but is there any indication that there may be locals that are keen to supply equipment or something to get it started, stage one?
I mean, from that first meeting we haven't had, but I'm assuming that a lot of them will be sort of engaging as many people as they can to try and keep those costs down and I think even Brian might have something to say about that as well.
Managers busting out of your skin, I think they're wanting to speak.
No, not at all, but through the chair, we have to first know exactly what the costs are and for what. So we're reviewing a staged approach as well with the facility, so it's not all in one, whether it be a burnout pad, training facility or whatever it may be. When we determine the next steps, sponsorship, future funding will be made part of that and local businesses and organisations will be actively approached to make sure they have fair opportunity to become involved.
Yeah, but that's just in equipment hire and all that, I'm not talking about use, like paid use. I'm talking about if they, if they need that, can they, can they voluntary supply some equipment at the right price?
That will all be reviewed and taken in, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, definitely.
Through the chair, I just wanted to wish Natasha Storey, Brian and the regional jobs committee all the best as they undertake a very important and long overdue body of work.
Through the chair, I spoke to Travis about this, is it worth involving Robbie Catter for the state? Because I think the laws around our young people, they do have to do the hundred hours and we've previously gone when Betty Keane, I know it's a long time ago, but she got voted out, but we took a course proposal to her. Having been involved in the skills and fatalities with our young people, they come on, on the highways and they come on off-road. And there's no facility really for off-road to be counted towards their hours. And if we've got off-road facilities at this place, then is there a way that that hundred hours can be shortened? Not shortened, but you know, if you do a course in off-road driving, that it reduces your hours, so. Because we've got kids who are 16, they're learners, then they get 17, they're provisional and bang, they're on a major highway or they go in bush because, you know, let's face it, we all did it, we go bush to have our fun. And that's where our accidents happen. And I think this, if we, if we get the state involved and we can somehow change that hundred hours rules to do with off-roading and that highway training, that might free up some money for this, but I think it'll also help our youth because that's, that's where our accidents are happening, is those two places, you know?
Yeah, through the chair, sorry, I just wanted to say, Drive at NQ in Townsville, they actually provided the back of their area an off-road course. So people use that off-road course, so that's what I sort of maybe suggested. If we get that running here, then we get an off-road course at the back so it'll be utilised and that'd be perfect to get it got, because like you said, I've had multiple friends and family roll it and whatever else out in the bush, you know, just new to driving and stuff. So exactly what you're saying is what will happen. So I think if we can try and get that off-road sort of course at the back, something where we can train them up and driving, that'd be perfect.
Through the chair, I think that's a good idea, John, but I think it should actually go into the schools as well because it's, it's like, they teach everything else, but something that you use for the rest of your life, they're not teaching that. So, you know, like if we can have a, you know, youth at 15-year-old doing these off-road courses, maybe we'll, we'll stop fatalities from happening because what I see is they teach a lot about school, but that's stuff that you use for the rest of your life, they don't teach you.
Thank you councillor Tully, was there any further comment on that? Okay, all in favour? Carried. Item thirteen point two, community development overview report, May 2024. Carried. Um, item thirteen point two, Community Development Overview Report, May twenty twenty-four. Do I have a mover for that?
Thirteen point two.
Yeah, yeah, I'll move that. I recommend that the council moves and accepts the May twenty twenty-four Community Development Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Do I have a second, uh?
Yeah, Coghlan.
Councillor Coghlan to second. Um, would you like to speak to that councillor Doyle?
Yeah, I'm just trying to read it here. I can't see, I'm going blind. Um, in May, the Civic Centre in Buchanan Park hosted a diverse range of events to entertain and engage the community. The centre hosted, uh, the exciting North West M P X from the seventh to the ninth of May, where exhibitors showcased their products and services and engaged with mining industry representatives through displays, simulations and discussions. On May tenth, Queensland Opera presented the sensational Do We Need Another Hero, sponsored by the council. The event was a massive hit, drawing standing ovations, uh, from the audience and was a sell-out. And that's, yeah, and other key notes, key events that took place during this period. Eleventh of May, Civic Centre Border Collie Children's Show and Workshop. Fourteenth of May, twenty twenty-four Civic Centre Crime Prevention Forum, a community event organised by council. Um, that event was, it was pretty, um, informative. We sat down, we had a good discussion about stuff at that event, so. Fourteenth, fifteenth of May, Buchanan Park School of the Year. Uh, fifteenth, sixteenth of May, twenty twenty-four Civic Centre Glencore Leadership Programme. Seventeenth of May, Civic Centre Citizenship Ceremony. We had District Barrel Races, Workshops, Department of State Development and Infrastructure Workshops. Um, there's Rocco Stedford, Glencore Leadership Programme, Buchanan Park State Land Auctions. So a lot went on in that, in that time period.
Yeah, thank you councillor Doyle. It has been a busy, busy month.
Just through the chair, um, can, um, I see these are broken up into, like, we've got the paper coming out every week. Can we sort of elaborate on these, um, on these showing the paper so more people know about it? Instead of just having a, a children's show and a workshop, Border Collie, can we have a little bit of background and have an ad or something, you know, to, 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 to develop what we're using? Like, we've got about fifteen, um, issues that are coming up in the month of May and we're probably not utilising that paper again to, um, to notify the people that they are available, all these, um, these.
So councillor Tully, you mean though notify ones that are happening in the future to advertise and get people along?
Yeah, more so the future, not the, not, not now. It's too late, but.
Yeah.
I think we can just even pinch a little page and something and say, look, this and, and tells people about what it's about. Instead of just having the Border Collie show, like, you have a bit of background on it so people can, um, you know, plan their days ahead.
I might just check with Matt. Have you got direct contact with the Civic Centre? Do they contact you with what's coming up or how do you find that out? Yep. Okay, we'll try and get those connections happening for you. Thank you.
Just through the chair, I'll, um, when I speak about the paper later on, um, I'll touch on, on how we can, and the community can help Matt with that.
Okay, that's in the budget meeting?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, councillor Ballard?
I'd just like to say that I think it's great to see that those council-owned facilities are being well utilised. They come at a great cost to our ratepayers and it's important that, um, you know, various organisations are given the opportunity to access those facilities that are, um, either no-cost basis or a, a low-cost one. And, uh, I think that's really promising to see how much utilisation there is there. And, uh, amongst the events that we've seen in the last month, I saw, I thought that, uh, Go Green Isa was, um, particularly well organised. It was a credit to the Mount Isa City Council officers that organised and facilitated that, um, very passionate group of individuals. And as a result, it was terrific to see a great turnout and it was very well, um, supported from, from the town.
Yeah, I'd have to agree councillor Ballard too. And after we, um, adopt the fees and charges later today at, at the special meeting, I'd urge the community.
The city say the extra day is great, um, as well as sort of encouraging people to move to the city and live in the city. Because like we said, we are the city of opportunity and there is plenty of opportunity there for, uh, people that are struggling in South East Queensland to then move up, enjoy a better lifestyle, uh, earn better money. So the more we can do on that, the better.
Yeah, thanks councillor Crowther. And I understand, um, like all of us as councillors and business people, we're trying to sell, you know, a positive story for our city. So it'd be great if community could adopt that attitude as well, because the way to make the place better is to get out all the good news stories as, as well, so.
Yeah, can I speak to?
Councillor Doyle, yes.
Yeah, sorry. So just exactly on all that sort of stuff, um, the tourism, they did a survey and, and the, the biggest things that came out of it, they wanted to see a lot of more indigenous history, culture, um, tourism and stuff like that. So I'm endeavouring to get out to some of the, the indigenous businesses and organisations and stuff to try and get them to start showcasing themselves a, a lot more. So we can start to promote, um, those positive avenues a lot more within the indigenous culture and history. Um, and also I, just on the, the, uh, like the Civic Centre and stuff, I was at the Brighter Futures Mentoring Programme yesterday. And there was, you know, a discussion of, of maybe could, instead of running, say, some of these programs at, you know, smaller offices at Design Life or at the TAFE or so forth, was there an opportunity for, um, council to support maybe running some of those programs? You know, like the mental programs, the job-ready programs and stuff in, in any of the facilities that we have here?
Well, you will probably need to take that one on notice and have that, that discussion out of, out of session.
Yep, sorry.
See, see, see what capacity is.
Yep.
Yeah, through, through the chair, um, I'd like to ask Tim a question and, and just some information as well. I remember we talked about the, the ads on the trains in Sydney.
Yeah.
Um, if there's been any, any thoughts around that. And there's locals here from Sydney, um, who I talked to and, and they'd be quite willing to, to put their thoughts forward. Um, and also the hospital, when I spoke to, um, uh, some people at the hospital, they were talking about the benefits that the health give to their workers and that's why they come out here. It's just, it's pretty good. Um, but what they said is, um, they thought they were boring because they had, they were sitting at home looking at each other. They got all this time. You know, whereas they come from the city and, and like you said, Tim, um, they're sitting in a train. Um, and they said that suddenly they got all this time to spend with their kids and so forth. So, um, you know, push that. Um, and also, um, how do we, how can we perhaps get people involved in our community? I know with, um, TikTok and Letitia might be more up, but she's a lot younger than me. But, um, I know Shannon Sweeney was a teacher here and she had like a million hits or whatever. So is there a way of getting young people to produce a TikTok competition about Mount Isa or something to, to try and draw eyes to the region? So, yeah, but how's that, that idea about the trains and that, how, how's that progressing?
Yeah, well, I can't comment much on TikTok to be honest, but, um, uh, basically what we're going to do is probably develop a scope of works around it and then we'll put it out to, we, we need to engage, uh, you know, a sophisticated marketing company to do it. And then we'll have to work with the, with the real estate agents and, and, um, lifestyle people and whatever and get, get the, get the whole program done. So we'll, we'll get a scope of works together once the budget's adopted and then we'll get it out and bring it back, so.
Once we plug that million dollar hole from the water board left with, left us with yesterday. Once we get over that shock, we'll talk about that. Okay, all in favour of that report? Thank you. Um, item thirteen point three, Splashes Overview Report. Do I have a mover? Our deputy mayor's not with us today. Was someone wanting to move that on her behalf?
Yeah, I'll, um, that's thirteen point three.
Thirteen point three, yes.
Um, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the May twenty twenty-four Splashes Overview Report as presented.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Do I have a second, uh?
I'll second it, councillor Tully.
Councillor Tully, would anyone like to speak to that one?
Yeah, I, the, uh, from all reports, the, um, the slide is pretty good. Um, looking forward to summer to try it because I'm not a cold person. Um, and it's be, it's quite well used, that splashes, um, in, in the summer months, certainly with the fitness programs and so forth. And we've got the new, uh, Move It, uh, program that's coming through. But there's also a couple of, um, promotions from the past that I'd like to speak with Brian and Eric Ashore about, to try and bring some attention to that, um, that pool as well. But, um, yes, um, good to see that, uh, the deputy mayor didn't break it going down at first, so that's good.
That was, that was good news, seeing the amount of cost.
And she lost her race to me.
Yeah, um, or, um, school holiday opening hours, have we got those on hand? For the pool? For school holidays, just for now, yeah, because of school holidays at the moment. Does any, do you have them in your report there? I just don't have my.
The weekend is there, two thirty till seven and ten thirty till five thirty.
Sorry, what was it?
It's, um, on Monday to Friday, two thirty till seven P M. And weekends at ten thirty till five thirty.
Okay.
But I think the Aqua Tower is now closed from, I saw a story on the, on the Facebook about that one.
So it wasn't being used because of the cold weather?
Oh, it'd be freezing.
Yeah, it wouldn't be for me either.
Just quickly, and through the chair, was, were we looking at getting the heaters and all that fixed up or are they now being fixed?
Well, the pool's pretty well heated.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be standing up eight metres in the air wet.
I know, I understand, I understand for the tower, but I just, yeah, I just, I knew there was talk of that it was under repair or something for the heating system. I don't, I just didn't know if it'd been.
So it's heated? You're swimming at the moment?
There's not steam coming off it, so we're not in.
No, I've had someone, I've had someone, um, going there and not me, just get it right, straight up. Um, I said it's, it's pretty good at the moment and that was only last week, so.
Okay, thank you. Righty, all in favour of that report? Thank you, that is carried. Item thirteen point four, Library Overview Report for April and May twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I'd like to move that, um, council receives and accepts the April and May twenty twenty-four Library Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second, uh, for that one?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll second it, second Cr- Crather.
Okay, so moved by councillor Coghlan, second by councillor Crowther. Um, any commentary?
No, look, I think we just need to keep pushing the ebooks. Um, because, uh, I, I know Fiona used to tell people, she used to love them and she used to, to like push that to people and say, you know, you can get the ebooks and, and walk around the yard doing your gardening and that. And I, I think that's something we really, uh, really need to push because I don't think a lot of people around town know, know that. So it might be a good story for the paper or something somehow. Um, but yeah, just really keep pushing that. But they do a great job, that library. There's, there's always something on there. And perhaps, um, the mayor could tell us a little bit about the, the, um, C U C that's there at the moment as well.
Um, yes, the C U C, um, had its soft opening. It's set up, we're there with the dual screens and the docking station. So, um, members of the community are welcome to go down to the bottom floor there at the library, um, plug in their laptop and then have access to be able to use three screens when they're completing work or assignments or visiting town. It is actually, um, designated for C U C students, but we've got it open to the whole community at the moment before the, um, building will be complete, um, mid next month, so.
Can I just speak?
Make full use of it. Yes, councillor Doyle.
Exactly like what James said and the wonderful Fiona said is the ebooks, I, I'm somebody that I can't look at something and, um, concentrate. I, I lose focus. I start thinking of a million other things. So the ebook stuff, you're sitting there listening to it and it's a lot better for you. So for me anyway. So the community is need to, if you find you're having trouble reading or concentrating like that, get into those ebooks because they honestly, they're, they're amazing.
Thank you.
Through the chair, what, what sort of numbers you're getting through for the, see, for, um, in the library for those, um, if, got, I'm just thinking about, once you've opened up there, you know, like it's a big complex you've got over there.
Look, to be honest, we haven't really advertised it too much here at the library because it is just a makeshift. We've got about, um, twenty people registered so far, but I'm not sure if they're making use of the facility just yet. Um, like, we can only judge from the figures at Maranoa. There's about, I think, six thousand people at Roma and they've got about two or three hundred registered students. So I'd imagine once the facility gets open and operational, that there will be, um, yeah, a large number of people registered and, and using the facility. So it's going to be, um, great, particularly with the economic transition, a great resource for the community.
Yeah, I'd just like a compliment, yes, or whoever's, I'm involved in that, um, building over there, he's done a great job. It's going to be, um, a big benefit to the Isa.
Thank you. On behalf of myself and councillor Coghlan who helped kick it off as well. Okay, all in favour? Okay, um, thirteen point five, Regional Arts Development Fund, round two funding. Do I have a mover for that motion?
Yeah, I'll just move that one. That, um, council endorses the Regional Arts Development Fund Radoff Committees. Recommendations approved the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four round two Radoff Funding for the following recipients. Council Book of Councill, Children's Book, Council of Australia, the C B C A, um, for five thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. That's the, uh, their project is a, um, uh, Queensland Outback Road Trip. So they're going to be going to the schools and that to, um, help them write, write and read, um, write books in children's stories as well. And then the North Queensland History Collection Incorporated, they've got a project which is celebrating a hundred years of mining of M Y M, where he's going to have a hundred photos, um, with plaques and that. And then it'll be first, um, presented at the Multicultural Festival. So the amount was for three thousand and fourteen dollars for those two.
Okay, um, any questions or further commentary?
Just need a second.
I couldn't remember if I'd seconded it or not. Do I have a second?
The second to councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully. All in favour? Thank you. Okay, item number fourteen, Infrastructure Services Report, fourteen point one, Major Projects Overview Report, May twenty twenty-four. Do I have a mover?
Movement councillor Tully.
Councillor Tully, um, do I have a second, uh?
Ballad.
Thank you councillor Ballad. Thanks councillor Tully.
Um, just on the, um, and just the recommendation that the council receives and notes, that May two thousand and twenty-four Major Projects Overview Report. The O V, um, as on the thirty-first of May, um, the featured eighteen product, uh, projects expenditure for, um, for year to date is roughly seventeen million, with a committed amount of twen- of nearly thirty million against the allocated capital works budget of forty-three million. This represented that we've committed, um, value is seven, seventy percent of the completion, with forty percent, um, hopefully finished by the end of the year. The brilliant, um, car parks are going along good. Um, hopefully it'll be, um, completed by, um, by the end of June, um, early July, um, when the car park is, um, will be sealed and the handover will happen then. The Telstra Hill is in the process, mid, um, site works are happening in the mid, mid-July. And, um, and the Murph is, um, is, um, had a bit of a, um, bit of a slowdown. So it won't be finished until, um, maybe at the end of the year.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any further commentary?
Uh, through the chair, I'd just like to say that, uh, those eighteen projects listed, uh, represent a pretty healthy cross-section of council responsibilities. Um, you know, we've got the likes of the energy efficient infrastructure and also the network reconfiguration that will both, uh, they both represent a large upfront cost, but hopefully we'll see a sizable reduction to the ongoing costs associated with those. And then we've got critical, uh, services such as camel wheel, uh, water. And then, you know, you've got your, your soft services that add to the livability. So I think the mix represented in those eighteen projects is very helpful.
Okay, thank you councillor Ballad.
Uh, just quickly through the chair as well, uh, just like to thank the, the staff being able to give a bit better, um, background on what some of these major projects are out there with actual getting some sort of dates involved with it, as well as some actual, you know, what's the processes and the steps. So it's good to see that more of those reports are going to be a little bit more in-depth so we could, a lot better understanding going forward.
Yep, definitely. Through the chair, is there, is there a list of projects that we've knocked off in the last financial year?
That would have been at the start in the, what was it called?
There is a little bit of a, a list there, councillor Coghlan, just, um, just at the end of that report, you'll see the, where they've got the ticks to the closed off.
So. So, the ten year place, we didn't spend all the money? Only spent half the money, so is that extra money we have in our budget or?
No, I think the year to date was just over.
Yeah.
So that flows through from the year before?
Yeah, there's no way we spent half the money.
No, no. Definitely not. Be the first time, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
So is that approved total budget for the, the whole life of the the project?
What page you want, councillor, sorry?
Page hundred and twenty. Just with that, it's the, the capital expenditure, um.
With the graph there? It's got more buticks on it.
So it says year to date committed expenditure five million, five and, five million, three hundred thousand. Year to date actual expenditure two point two.
Yeah, that.
That'd be council commitment.
The committed expenditure there is uh five thousand two hundred and fifty eight, so it'd just be a matter of timing to that's probably at the thirty first of May, so we probably paid a whole lot of bills.
So that'll come up again at the end of the financial year?
Yeah.
That's year to date, see, Y D D.
The rest was paid in the previous.
Previous year.
Previous year.
It says year to date, year to date committed expenditure five million.
That's the ta- that'd be the total budget.
It says year to date.
Yeah, but I guess committed is what we've said we're gonna pay for it. That's what we've committed to it.
Where, yeah, where they've only did.
Yeah, I think we would have paid, Chalae, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we would have paid three million in the last financial year and two probably slightly misleading. And then the, the total budget is five point three.
Five point three.
But it would be good if it had a cost that much. Okay, all in favour of that report? Thank you. Um, do I have a mover for fourteen point two, Water and Sewer Overview Report?
Yeah, um, it's my portfolio, so. Uh, I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts the April twenty twenty four, May twenty twenty four Water and Sewage Overview Report.
Thank you councillor Coglan, do I have a second uh?
Ballad.
Councillor Ballad, would you like to talk to that one councillor Coglan?
No, look, I'm sorry, I just haven't been across and I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Any, any commentary, questions?
Uh, just probably a quick note, the sort of, you can see there's a lot, obviously a lot of work getting done. Um, while we still understand there's a lot of work still to be done as well. So I think with the public, you mean, if they see in the leaks and that, to report them as well, um, so we can then go on top of those as well.
Through the chair, um, I, I see we borrowed money at one time pre, pre, pre ask, um, for, um, for renewable infrastructure. Where was the renewal um done? Can, is probably a question for Stephen.
That was a long, that was like two thousand eight, two thousand and nine, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I just see that we've um, we borrowed um, uh, we, we took out borrowings um in, in over consecutive years there. Um, and I'm just wondering whether that infrastructure, that infrastructure um renewal mon- money was spent. Because there seems to be a lot of um maintenance, but not a lot of renewal. Is that across the um, across the highways more so the um, the art piece off the um, off the main, off the mainstream?
We do water main and service renewals each year, but in terms of big works, the last big works would have been construction of reservoir three A in about twenty twenty and the works at the inlet of the sewage treatment plant around about two thousand fourteen to sixteen. That was all the stainless steel you saw during the, the tour. And we spent a, a million dollars on those new concrete tanks or the refurbished concrete tanks you saw on the, on the tour. But that's the, the major works.
How much of that money's left over from that borrowing? Is that for um, or did we use it all up straight away? Straight away, yeah, okay. I just hear it was done, it was well before our time, but I just wanted to see what was um.
Definitely was, even before my time councillor Tully.
But, yeah, I don't think it is though, actually. Um, there's two lots of, there's three lots of infrastructure um borrowing there for um, for uh, for, for infrastructure. I'm not sure where it is though, but it was in our borrowing.
Can you, you know where that is?
Page seventy seven, is it?
Thirty seven.
Or thirty seven? Yeah. All right, all right. You see the loans, there was three and, so eleven, twelve and thirteen, what, what, sorry Peter, was before your time, um.
I was gonna say, I can't remember.
Yeah, no, I just seen, um, and I, and I just wondering, you know, whether they're all, because I mean, we don't till um, the final payment's not till thirty two, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to see, because I haven't seen um that much upgrades. I see a lot of maintenance, but not a lot of new upgrades.
Yep, I would have to agree with that. And then um we might just also like to highlight the discussion we had in relation to the leaks and things and reporting them about snaps and solve. So um we were handing out magnets at the show promoting snaps and solve, and it is a great way to streamline processes. We are receiving those um reports of leaks and complaints. They are triaged and they are being acted on. But we're just missing that closing the loop um process of reporting back to you and letting um, I guess, the community know where we're at with those. Um, and once we get our processes better in place and we're streamlined through the tech that we've got, we'll be able to close that loop. But until then, um, you can continue to use that app and, and feel confident that we are seeing it and, and things will get looked at in a timely manner.
Just through the chair, um, we've got a new um, uh, business started up in town. He's um, he's a water leaks only, he doesn't make, he won't fix anything, but he'll um, he'll um, he's, he's got equipment to find any leaks underground. Um, and he's pretty well reasonable price. And um, I just thought if the council was um interested in something like that, I'm more than happy to um pass his number on.
Okay, thank you. And would, would a homeowner use that if they're worried about a, a leak that they can't find, if their water bill's really high? Is that what he would do?
Yeah, that's correct, hundred percent, yeah, so. But any um, you like, i- if the council, um, probably through Steve, if someone does um ring up and say, look, I've got a exceptionally um high wa- water, water meter reading. Um, the, um, Steve may be able to put him in contact with him, um, whether it's private, he, he, he's doing a lot of work for us now. He's um, um, and I just thought for anyone who's um not through our, through my business, is um, they can use them as well.
Okay, always good to hear about new businesses starting up. Okay, any further commentary or are we ready to vote? All in favour? Thank you, I think I can see you all still. Okay, um, item fourteen point three, West Street Remediation Tender Report.
Yeah, I'll um move, move councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully, do I have a second uh?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Councillor Coglan, any commentary on that?
Um, just that uh, they're just gonna do um, the, the bitumen and everyone would have seen it, that was, it's, it's pretty bad between Elmer Street Crossing and the Barkley Highway. Um, we're hoping to get um Fulton Hogan Industries um while they're in town to do it because we don't wanna give that money back. It's only three hundred and fifty thousand, but it's still um three hundred and eighty, sorry. Um, it's, it's road recovery money, so um we've gotta try and utilise that as quick as we can. And um, you know, it's um money that we definitely don't wanna give back.
Yeah, no, it's good to see um our roads getting improved. Um, all in favour?
Yeah, can I?
Oh, yes.
Just ask the question through the chair. It says um tenders were released on vendor panel on twenty ninth of May twenty twenty four to borrow Fulton stabilized. Um, just so I'm, I understand that process, so they were released to those three people. Is, do they have to apply for, for those tenders to be released? Or did we send the tenders just to those three people? How does that work?
I think we, we released the tender, so we would have released it to them.
So how does that vendor panel work? Like, you put it?
It's an electronic system. It releases it and then it just, it'll send it to those people and it's got to be acknowledged. It's like an electronic tender.
Yeah. Anybody access that?
I can comment as well. Um, if you, if you register it on vendor panel, which a lot of businesses are, and they say that they can do roadworks, then they'll get notification of that tender. Um, and so like, say for, say for myself, if it's for um small suppliers and that, I get notified of those tenders or say lawnmowers notified. But the, each business has got to register what uh services they can provide, and then they'll then get notified on those. So then, um, part of vendor panel is, is that you sort of make sure you're updating that all the time and that you sort of put, you know, you know, you sort of promote your business as best as you can. So then, exactly what those businesses do, they say that they can do roadworks or like that, and then they get notification on those tenders.
And is that a, a, a na- nationwide?
Yeah, yeah, if they, yeah, if they, if they nominate for say North Queensland or, you know, or North West Queensland, then they'll get those, and then some of them will go sort of state, statewide and even sort of nationwide.
Okay, thank you. Um, all in favour? Fast. Item fourteen point four, Mount Isa Civic Centre Engineering Maintenance Works Passenger Lift.
Yeah, I'll move it councillor Tully.
Councillor Tully, was there a motion you needed to, to move?
Recommendation.
Yeah, I'm just. Recommendation to the council award a contract to lifts N Q P T Y L T D for the supply and installation of a custom built lift at the civic centre for the sum of two hundred and ninety four thousand, five hundred and forty four, uh five, excluding G S T. And that council is satisfied that there's only one supplier is reasonably available. Um, the, the um background on is that we, we have to do it.
Hang on, can I just get a second uh for that one to get the discussion started?
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Crowther. Okay councillor Tully, off you go.
Um, just a bit of background on, I think we've got to start doing it because it's been in the process now for a long time. We've got a legal requirement as a, as a council to um, to get people up to the um, um, to the uh, uh, to, uh, top levels. And I think the longer we leave this, it's just gonna get dear and dearer. So um that's the reason we've um, we've um moved this motion to um get it to happen.
Thank you councillor Tully, and I think it's not only the top level, it's the bottom level as well. And that's the reason why we haven't been able to hold the seniors events there for the last two or three years. So yes, it is very expensive to get it fixed, but really we don't have any choice. And it'll be great to welcome our seniors and, and you know, the whole community back, being able to use the civic centre.
Yeah, I just sort of put through as well that, yeah, I'd fully agree that we've got to get this done, it's been well overdue. Looks like we've been trying to Band-Aid it for the last sort of couple of years and to no, no effect. So we've sort of just been, like anything, putting a bit of good money after bad when um we should have been just fixing the problem and going new in the first place.
Through, through the chair, I just think that, just um, a, a lot of people are probably gonna say why we haven't got a um, like a ramp or something, you know, right to the top. The, the cost of that against this um expenditure that we're um, we're utilising here, I think it's um, it's be well out of the, well out of the cost.
Yep. Okay, thank you all in favour? That is carried unanimously. Item fourteen point five, Register of Pre-qualified Suppliers Trade Services. Do I have a mover?
Yeah, I'd like to move that council award contract twenty twenty three dash fifty seven, register of pre-qualified suppliers, trade services and appoints the list of suppliers provided for a term of one year commencing on the first of July twenty twenty four. With the option of an extension of two, one year periods at council's discretion and delegate authority to the chief executive officer in accordance with the Local Government Act two thousand and nine to enter into contracts, negotiate, finalize and execute any and all matters so, associated with or in relation to this contract arrangement.
Second to councillor Tully.
Thank you, move Coglan, second to um Tully, any, any um?
Yeah.
Talk about this one?
James, you wanna talk? Um. No, no, but, no, no, we don't.
I just think it's a great idea, like, we're, we're, we're a city with um, with uh so many expertise here and we just probably haven't looked into it enough. And I think this is gonna um, we've really got to sell this um to make sure that all the locals are, you know, the local contractors are having the opportunity, given the opportunity to um at least tender for something. Because I, like I said, we've got so much expertise within our Shire that's untouched and probably haven't been advertised as a council. And going forward, we'd like to see that happen.
And I do, I, I have spoken to, to tradesmen around the place. Um, and some of them haven't been um, they've, haven't been happy with the processes that we've used in the past. Because they've said that, well, one I spoke to recently said that they were um a supplier, a preferred supplier. Um, they were asked to quote on a job and then the job, the quote they gave was used as a tender for a job. Um, and it went to an out of town person. Um, and others have said that they, they don't register because they um, they just haven't got, they've got enough work, so they don't, they don't think the, it's worth, worth their effort. Um, so I don't know, you know, whether we can fix that because sometimes um, we're giving it to the lowest bidder, it seems to be, and sometimes that's why we revisit jobs. Um, yeah, I just, I think there's more work to be done in this area.
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna say that was, that was the discussion we had when we worked through the procurement policy. So hopefully the different weighting that we've had to local suppliers, and also there is that weighting on quality of work and work that they're able, you know, have been shown to do in the past will help fix that issue. Did you wanna add to that, CEO?
What it allows us to is we, after, after a year, we can refresh the list, so as people see the value in it, um, hopefully more suppliers will come forward.
That's just a question I wanted to ask through the chair as well. So this list there, that's there, that's the only ones you can use or you can still go to other people? Just obviously new businesses come to town within that year period.
You still use them, it just makes it, if, if we have a pre-qualified list of suppliers, it just makes it easier to use, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Streamlines the process.
You can engage them the next day really, can't you, if they're in the, in the system? And I think that's how we got to advertise it, like, when we wanna use them, we can use them tomorrow. If they're not in the system and there's a bit of a process that the council's got to go through to um allow them to be, uh do a job for the council. But once you're in the process, you can be used tomorrow. Uh, and I think we've got to really advertise that part of it.
So, through the chair, we, so there's not a preferred supplier, so you might have air conditioning maintenance. You may have a so, a number of businesses that you can go to.
Well, they're pre, they're pre-qualified suppliers, so you don't have to, once, you don't have to set them up, you, you've got all their details.
Yeah.
Just send out a quote and get it back straight away.
So there might be three or four air conditioning maintenance and services businesses? Okay. Have, do we go to these businesses in town and try and help them through that process or do we leave it with them?
We did a lot of workshops and invited people along.
Do we go to them?
Well, we put on public meetings and, yeah, we didn't go to them, but we invited people along.
Is there any way we can streamline that sort of system, um, Tim, or is that?
I think it has, look, it has been streamlined to what it has been in the past. We've tried to simplify the forms and processes. We're happy to keep simplifying it, but there's certain mandatory requirements that we've got to make.
Yep, because that was one of the things that, that, you know, that people have made a statement to me that it was just a bit of a long drawn out system, so.
Well, it was simplified from the time before to now.
Okay. Thanks.
Through the chair, I think, um, you know, with uh the North West Weekly coming back to Mount Isa and uh with the shared desire of this council to increase local participation in uh the business that the council's doing in town. Uh, hopefully there's an opportunity for us to reach out and encourage local vendors to participate in that process. And uh our ability to broadcast that better might be greatly helped by uh Matt and his work.
Definitely.
Thank you. Okay.
I think, yeah, but just on that with Dan, I think the social uh media in there, we've got to work together to get, you know, the. I think, yeah, just on that with Dan, I think the social, uh, media in there, we've got to work together to get, you know, the, like, if we work together, we get a better result because then we're covering more of an audience. We've got the social media, people like Jamie is on social media all the time and the media reads the paper. So, um, it just crosses, um, you know, like, if we work together and to get the same result, even if it's the same write-up and everything, it, it, I think it's going to be a bonus to us, not a.
Courses for courses councillor Tully. Okay, all in favour? Okay, item fourteen point six, register of pre-qualified suppliers, plant hire, wet and dry.
It mounts, I'll move this councillor Tully.
Councillor Tully, you're going to need to read the, um, recommendation for me, I think, at fourteen point six.
Four point six, just let me.
Which is.
He can do it if you want to.
Yeah, I'll move it. I think it's my portfolio.
One point nine.
I, uh, I recommend that council award contract twenty twenty-three dash fifty-eight, register of pre-qualified suppliers, plant hire, wet and dry services, and appoints the list of suppliers provided. For a term of one year commencing on first of July twenty twenty-four. With the option of an extension of two one-year periods at council's discretion. And delegate authority to the chief executive officer in accordance with the local government act two thousand and nine. To enter into contracts, negotiate, finalise and execute any and all matters associated with or in relation to this contract arrangement.
Thank you councillor Coglan. Do I have a second, uh? Did you want to second that councillor?
Yeah, councillor Tully's second.
Thank you. Anyone wanting to speak to this?
I think it's just, um, the overview is just all about the, um, one before that, uh, fourteen point five. So we're just elaborating on fourteen point five, um.
Thank you. All in favour? And that is carried. Okay, um, it is now time for general business. We will go around as is our usual practice and start with councillor Ballard.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate the Mount Isa Show Society on another great event this year. Uh, I think I speak on behalf of all of us here when I say that council's proud to provide in-kind support for these volunteer committees to help put on terrific events for the benefit of the whole community. And, uh, from what I saw on Friday, it was well supported and, and very well done. So, um, congratulations to all involved.
Yeah, I'd just like to say the same thing about the show. Um, I'm a big kid brain, so I love the show. I go then I smash all the food. Um, it's the best time of the year. And it was done well and my kids enjoyed it. And as far as I've seen, everyone else enjoyed it. It was a great time. Um, just wanted to talk on some of the stuff that I've been up to in the last couple of months. Um, so that through Design Life, we've got a Brighter Futures program, which is trying to help people get job-ready. Um, and it's about getting some mentoring and some one-on-one mentoring as well. So, um, the program looks really good. Um, we did our induction stuff yesterday and I'm pleased to say like it's, it's heading in the right direction. Um, also talked about, we did some painting with the kids. So through Queensland Youth Services, um, my wife, uh, and her sisters run the Kanjolala Art. We sat down, we, we spoke to some kids just about some issues and barriers that they've had. Um, they did some painting, some, some sort of, to a degree, it's like a meditation where they can paint and talk. Um, that was wonderful. It was really good. We had, um, Black Image, um, a band. Um, they went and played at, at Normanton Radio. We had a guy, actually Perry Bell, he's in town at the moment, came and sang, um, live some of his own songs that he actually wrote. So the kids got to, to listen to that and also speak to them about other avenues, like with art and stuff like that. And, and trying to get them to unlock some of the skills that they might not think they have. Uh, also trying to get sports back in the schools. We've been having some discussions with Alan Bailey and some meetings. And we went and spoke with Spin Effects Junior. Um, and from what Alan tells me, talking to Father Mick, Good Shepherd seemed to be on board with as well, where we're trying to get touch as a, a sport and maybe even a curriculum, um, to try and engage kids to, to get back into health and fitness and, and activity. So I've been having a lot of meetings and discussions with people about that, um, and that's moving forward really well. So it looks like we're getting a lot of traction with that and hopefully it'll happen. Um, we did that indigenous tourism, um, stuff, so it, uh, the tourism and event stuff. So again, like I spoke about before, indigenous tourism, history and culture is, is a big thing. And highlighted that, um, tourists want to see and especially in Mount Isa and other places like this. So I'm, like I said, I'm endeavouring to go around to, to a lot of the indigenous business owners, the elders and stuff like that. And trying to get them to really support each other as well as showcase themselves and, and let them know and let the community and tourists know that, you know, there's a lot of people out in this community that actually, um, generally know the history, culture and, and want to go and show people. And they're proud of it and they want to go and show people some stuff. One thing I want to talk about is with rugby league is, um, I just, we've got a lot of talent in this town, in this, in this community and surrounding areas. And it's not just rugby league, that's just my, um, that's just what I, you know, my expertise. I just really want to appeal to the community to make sure that we're putting, um, our kids and other people's kids in the best environments possible. Um, do not create or enable, um, an environment or foster an environment that you wouldn't put your own children in. Uh, I just want to get that across because we've had a few issues lately and it's, it's, like, it's really important. Our youth is our future, not just in sports, academics here. We want to see, myself want to see some of the kids that I work with taking over our roles in the council. Those things can't happen if we don't create and foster really good positive environments. Um, and I think we need to start getting the right people in the right jobs and the right people in the right places and spaces. And I'm endeavouring to try and do that with a lot of support from other people that, um, genuinely want to see passion. I generally have passion to see change. Um, so hopefully, you know, in my term, even if it's one, two, whatever it is, you know, I can, you know, help the community best, get the best out of their kids and their, and their, um, and the youth. To try and make sure that our future leaders are, you know, are given the right tools to do the right things. Uh, I'm very passionate about it. Obviously, as you can see, I've got three boys and a thousand nephews and nieces. So, um, I just want to see a better environment and, and better community and, and positivity for our kids in those spaces.
Thank you councillor Doyle. Um, councillor Crowther?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to comment what I've been up to. Um, I didn't actually get to the show this year because, um, we had to go away. Obviously, school holidays is, um, opportunity for a lot of sports to be happening. And I was fortunate enough to get over to Townsville to see the, um, a lot of the kids play football, or so, should be soccer. Uh, playing the fellow melee competition, which is good to see. There's, um, well represented by the teams in Mount Isa. Um, very good comments on the attitude of those kids and how they compare to a lot of the other kids. They're all well-respected and, uh, well-natured kids and they all competed hard and we got a couple of thirds, I think. And, um, so the questionable results, but that was good to see. That was that. And also the sports with the quizin', um, good luck to all the teams that gone out for quizin' and for comforo. So it's sort of a busy time for, for teams in sports. And like John said, it, there's a lot to do with sport and we've got a lot of good talent. And that was on showcased over in Townsville over the weekend. Um, and just be careful on the roads. We had that incident and, uh, congr- good work with the police. They'd sort of had a busy day on that Friday morning when we were on the, drove, but they, um, were able to organise that, um, cars could get around and, um, still get to these kids to get to the sports because obviously a lot of us strive for that. Um, and they were like very busy with that, um, accident and they did really well. So congratulations on, on the effort of their team there for getting all that done.
Thank you councillor Crowther. Councillor Tully?
Um, just like to, um, congratulate the girls, um, or the ladies at the, um, at the booth in the, in the, um, at the show the other day. They'd done exceptionally good job. They were bouncing around. I tried to get them to sing. I said the quickest way you get people to turn up is, start singing really, really loud. I got them started, but they didn't. But, um, but they wanted me to sing and then it all fell apart. Um, that's the first thing. That's the next, one of the other thing, no, just a couple. I think, um, the, I think the, um, police are doing a really good job in the last couple of months in town. I don't seem to see, we get waves of it, but I've, I've just noticed around town that, um, I think we just need to compliment them on the, on the work that they're doing presently. Because I, I, I do notice there is less activity in the wrong direction. Um, the third thing is, um, um, I talked about painting, um, the, the CBD, um, which I'd still love to see, um, whether we get a grant or whether we don't, is go around all the business and, and start with, even if we start with one street, one street's better than no streets. Because they, they all need, I, I painted mine three times in five years. And, um, I just think it does make a massive difference to your business. Um, and try and sell it as a council to make it a better place for all, um, for people to, and more so for tourists. So when they see a nicely painted town, um, there's a com- comments come out of it. So, that's the other one. The last one is, um, with the, um, all the green waste out at the grounds, I'd love to see, um, because lawns have taken up a lot of water and water is the most expensive article that we have as a Shire. I'd love to, um, try and, um, utilize that green waste better and start, um, building up massive, um, like, uh, compost are down the medium strips, more so down East Street, which is terrible. Um, but also down the main drags and try and develop going towards the airport. Because as we know, all people are coming in, uh, they're flying in now, they're not driving in. And, um, we need to make them happy coming into town more so than, um, saying, um, you know, so I'd really like to develop that area. And a lot of that stuff can be used through green waste. So green waste at the, at the moment is, um, is building up at the dump. And, um, and I'm just, and I've got someone in town that I've been speaking to this week is, um, is already sort of started the process about twelve months ago. And Tim's going, I'll send the email to Tim and hopefully Tim can deal with him. But, um, that, and that'll utilise, uh, a problem that we have at the dump, which is green waste. Um, and I think we can utilise it in the streets of town by not, and by compost having big areas and, and putting natives into the main, main drags because, um, we won't be able to use as much water.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Coglan?
Thanks, madam mayor. Uh, I, I just wanted to thank, um, council and, and councillors and, and the community, um, for the support that they've given me over the last, um, oh, well, long time. Um, and thanks for all your support and kind words with Fiona. Um, she loved this town. And, uh, I knew she would when she came here because it's a community and, um, and she just loved being part of it. And, um, the community loved her back. And, um, and I think that's something that if you don't live here, you don't, you don't know that. And I always thought that, you know, like we, she was here, um, twenty-odd years. And I always thought when she went back to Brisbane that, that some of her friends sort of looked at her and thought, you poor girl. You know, he's taken you out there into the middle of nowhere and they never came. You know, we went to Brisbane, they never came here. And, and when she fell ill, the last couple of years, some of them have visited. And they finally get it. You know, they, they said, you know, they go uptown and people talk. People say hello, even if they don't know you. And they can't believe how much there is to do here. Um, and just the, the welcoming, you know, like we'd be over some, go over someone's place for a barbecue and stuff like that. And just, they just couldn't believe, um, the sense of community that's in this place. And, uh, and that's what I love about, I'm sure that's what yous all love about it. And it was so, it's been so good that, that part that she's been able to, to show those people, you know, those city slickers. And they finally get it, what Mount Isa's about. Um, I've been blown away by the, the messages from the kids. As you know, Fiona worked at the school, but, um, you know, kids get a bad rap. But, um, they're, they're exceptional and the potential, I just, every time, I love working at the schools because I walk in and I just see their potential. They have the whole world in front of them. And, and I agree with your words, John, that anything we can do to enable them to, to fulfil that potential, um, we should be doing. And that's one of the reasons why, um, I'm here on this council and I think good leadership is essential. And when we move into those positions, we need to leave our egos behind because I see a lot of problems, um, in the organisations responsible for youth, then it comes down to ego. Um, every decision that should be made should be made for the betterment of those kids. Um, and that's the big selling point for this town is bring your kids here and, um, they, they can do anything. You know, and they're looked after and protected. And I think some of the comments I got from, um, Fiona's friends who visited were, um, you know, jeez, this is a wonderful place to bring up kids. And, uh, and that's our selling point. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for, for your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Coglan. Okay, will we break now? Or the food is there? Or move into confidential? We do, what do you feel like? Confidential first? Adjourn? Yep. Okay, we'll adjourn. Have a break.
I'd like to move the recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve. Sixteen point one, twenty twenty three D R F A restoration works package one to five variations. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four G J subsection G. Sixteen point two D R F A project management services. This matter is considered to be confidential. Actually, they're all considered to be confidential under two five four J. Items sixteen point three regional economic futures fund outback at Isa reptile and wildlife park business case. Sixteen point four notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges assessments one zero 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 four five nine six, one zero 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 six zero three nine and one zero zero five two five four six. Sixteen point five disposable disposal of council asset waste management two time portable containers with ancillary shade. Item sixteen point six disposal of council asset one hundred and three West Street assessment one zero zero five eight four eight five. Can I please have a second for this motion?
Second in, Cora.
Thank you, councillor Crowe. All in favour? That's carried unanimously. We'll now move into closing.
Council moves out of closed council into open council. Can I please have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ballard, all in favour. Ready, Mr Music? Okay, can I please have a mover for item 16.1, 2023 DRFA Restoration Works Package 1 to 5 Variations?
I'll go with that one. A recommendation that council approves and delegates the CEO of Manauiza City Council Authority to conduct negotiations with Northland Consultants Engineering to facilitate the contingency values of up to 15% of each package of work awarded under OM 17-02-24, in accordance with the Local Government Act of 2009, Local Government Regulations 2012 and council's procurement policy, and allocates additional 24-25 financial year budget for the above restoration projects accordingly, noting that works are fully funded by the Queensland Reconstruction Authority, the QRA.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second to councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully, all in favour. Thank you. Do I have a mover for item 16.2, DRFA Project Management Services?
I recommend that council authorise the CEO to negotiate with Northlane Consulting Engineers under contract number 2023-71 for the service period of three years from the 1st of July 2024 until the 30th of June 2027, plus allowing for the competition of any events started with QRA within this timeframe. Allocate funding for the next three financial years for this work based on an average of 10 to 13% of the QRA claimed events for project management services. Note that the services provided by the selected project management consultant are 100% funded by QRA and council only needs to commit funds where required for costs associated with the preparation and acquittal of submissions.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Do I have a second for that motion?
Ballard.
Thank you councillor Ballard, all in favour. Thank you. You will need to leave councillor Doyle. Do I have a mover for item 16.3, Regional Economic Futures Fund Outback at Isa Reptile and Wildlife Park Business Case?
Move councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully, seconder.
Crowther.
Thank you councillor Crowther, all in favour?
Opposed.
Was that noted?
Yes, please.
Can you note that, Teef? Thank you. Do I have a... Oh, sorry. No, no, sit down. I was just starting before you were back, that's all. Item number 16.4, Notice of Intention to Sell Land for Overdue Rates and Charges, Assessment 1 0 0 0 4 5 9 6, 1 0 0 0 6 0 3 9, and 1 0 0 5 2 5 4 6.
I'll move that council resolves to decline to grant a concession to the applicant under section 121b of the Local Government Regulations 2012 by way of an agreement to defer payments of rates and charges levied on the land bearing the following rating assessment numbers: 1 0 0 4 5 9 6, 1 0 0 6 0 3 9, 1 0 0 5 2 5 4 6.
Do I have a second, Al?
Ballard.
Thank you councillor Ballard, all in favour. Thank you. Item 16.5, Disposal of Council Asset Waste Management, Two Time Portable Containers Within Cellar Shade.
I'll go again. I recommend that council approves the disposal of two bi-portable containers situated at the waste management facility by way of auction under section 227b of the Local Government Regulations 2012, and that appointment of an auctioneer to dispose of these assets by way of auction is conducted under the requirements of council procurement policy, and that evaluation of the assets is conducted prior to the auction to allow for the council's chief executive officer to set a reserve of the assets for the auction.
Seconder please.
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Coghlan.
Can I ask... No, can't ask a question.
Not out of close, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just because we're in confidential now. All in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Item number 16.6, Disposal of Council Asset 103 West Street, Assessment 1 0 0 5 8 4 8 5.
I'll go again. It's recommended that council approves the disposal of council valued non-current asset described as lot one on SP 312346, the land more commonly known as 103 West Street, Manauiza by way of auction under section 227 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, and that council agrees that a re-evaluation of land is carried out prior to the disposal of the valued non-current asset, which will allow the determination of the reserve price as set by the chief executive officer, and that council further agrees that the appointment of auctioneer of an auctioneer is completed in accordance with council procurement policy.
Do I have a second for the motion?
Yeah, I'll second it, council.
Councillor Coghlan, thank you, all in favour? Thank you, that is carried. There be no further agenda items, the time is now... What is that? Eighteen minutes past eleven? Oh, 26, sorry. Where did I learn to read a clock?